Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, March 4, 2025. First up, we have roll call. Kim, maybe have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Council President. Council President Corr.
Here.
Councilmember Boyce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Boyd.
Here.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour.
Here.
Councilmember Michaud.
Here.
Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Next up, agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion, please?
So move.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. Okay, next, we have operations for approval of minutes for February 18, 2025.
So move.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. And we have payment of bills. We should have received those in our email.
So move.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our fourth quarter 2024 investment report. Welcome, Joe. Joe Bartlamay.
Good afternoon. I'm Joe Bartlamay. I'm the cash and investment officer in our finance department. Today, I'll be presenting the fourth quarter investment report. And this report was presented to the Investment Advisory Board on February 27. So at the end of the fourth quarter, we had, for 2024, we had cash in the bank earning a 4.75% earnings credit that offsets our bank fees, balance of $6.6 million at the end of the fourth quarter. We have our short-term portfolio, which is our Washington State Local Government Investment Pool portfolio, and that's overnight liquidity, earning 4.6%. We're able to access that cash very quickly if we need it, and that had a balance of $114.4 million. And next, we have our long-term portfolio, average yields of 3.21%, average maturity of 895 days, a market value of $255.2 million, and an investment total of $258.8 million. And the pie chart below shows significant portion, the green is in, of our portfolio is in U.S. Treasuries, and the red, almost a third, is in the local government investment pool. Here we have our five-month flow of cash and investments by type. The green line at the very bottom is cash in the bank, and we are continuing to keep just a minimal amount of cash to cover our short-term needs in the, in the bank, and that's with today's higher earnings credit, we're able to easily cover our U.S. Bank fees. The purple line above is the Washington State Government Investment Pool. That's our short-term portfolio. And above that is the, on the orange is the long-term portfolio, which is our portfolio of maturities out to about five years. As you'll notice, the short-term portfolio balance reduced at the end of the year, or reduced towards the end of the year, and the long-term portfolio increased. Over the past couple of years, we've incrementally increased our long-term portfolio balance to lock in those today's higher yields, up to five-year maturity. At the same time, we've spent down some of our fund balance on some of those large projects that we have going, like the Keyhawk project and the Administrative Services Building, as well as we've spent down some of those ARPA funds that we're required to spend down. So the next slide shows, year over year, the, this is total cash and investments by, total cash investments over the course of the year, three-year comparison. And 2022 is the lower section, the lower line. We did receive that second ARPA allocation in the middle of 2022, so that's that spike in June of 2022. 2023 was relatively consistent with private, prior years, excuse me. And then 2024, again, as we've spent down some of that fund balance on those larger projects, the 2024 balance ended just slightly less than it, than the prior year. And next, we have interest earnings over five quarters. You can see a relatively consistent increase quarter over quarter up through the third quarter of 2024. Fourth quarter shows a slightly lower interest earning. Again, that's, rates were slightly lower in the short-term portfolio, and a smaller balance to invest, so that resulted in just a slightly lower earnings. The dark blue bar on the lower section, or on the left, is the general fund only, but lighter blue is all other fund. Next, we have the total cash and investment portfolio allocation by fund, so this shows the total cash and investment balance, how much belongs to each of the various funds that we have in the city. Again, significant portions you'll see in the general fund, the various street capital insurance funds, utility funds. And one thing to note also is, as we're still working on our annual closing for 2024, the allocation between the funds still could change just slightly, but the total should be the same as it is now. Next, we have our long-term portfolio, so this does not include cash or the state investment pool. And again, this shows up in the upper right, the pie chart shows the vast majority of that short, long-term portfolio is in U.S. Treasuries. And the remaining, just a little more than a quarter of it, is in various other investment funds types combined. The lower-left, the bar chart, that shows our maturity distribution. We have long-term investments with maturities out to five years. This again gives us a opportunity to reinvest the current yields as our investments mature. We can reinvest. Currently, the yields are still pretty high. It also gives us an opportunity, if we need cash flow, to not reinvest funds if we choose. Next slide shows policy compliance. All of our various investment types are well within, within our city investment policy guidelines. And then lastly, the sector allocation over four quarters. And really, the one thing to note is the, the allocation changes are primarily increasing U.S. Treasuries and slightly decreasing all of their investment types. Any questions?
Any questions for Joe? I have a quick question. Maybe you can just refresh my memory.
Yes.
Do these investments follow S&amp;P 500, or?
So these are bond funds, so they're not stock portfolios.
They're not, as impact, just the, thank you.
I tried, but it won't let me do that.
Right, right now. Thank you, Joe. I don't think there's any questions or comments. All right. Thank you so much. It was good to see you. All right, next up, Parks Council Member Michaud, please.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two items tonight. Up first, we have Marina and Kristin to talk about the Skip Housing Capital Fund recommendations. Welcome.
Hello. You might recall last year that Claire Goodwin actually came and presented to you all on the Housing Capital Fund, but Kristin and I volunteered to take the presentation on her behalf tonight because she's making the rounds with the 11 other cities. So we felt like if we could help out with that, we were happy to. So hopefully, we can answer any of your questions. And Kristin is also here tonight to help answer questions. Just to refresh your memory, the Skip Housing Capital Fund is a pooled opportunity with the member jurisdictions of Skip, so we have a very meaningful opportunity to invest in affordable housing and retaining affordable housing in South King County. There are 11 member jurisdictions that participate in the pooling, and the fund sources for the Housing Capital Fund come from both 1490, I'm sorry, 1406 and 1590. So 1406 came about first, and that was in 2019. So all of the cities in South King County who are members of Skip are pooling those funds for affordable housing. And then in 2020, we enacted 1590 in the city of Kent, and that also allows us to pool the 1/10th of 1% local sales and use tax with Skip for affordable housing. The way that the process works, the Housing Capital Fund is open. The Advisory Board is actually the part of Skip who reviews the first batch of the applications that are received after each city has an opportunity to hear which, which projects in their jurisdictions have applied. So they actually recommended four of the six projects, so there were six total. Four were recommended by the Advisory Board. There was a little unique situation this year where two of the projects were in the city of Renton, and Renton actually keeps their 1590 funds in their own jurisdiction. And that's unique. It's a little bit different because Renton has their own housing authority, and they also, at the time, had the Sunset Revitalization Project. So they knew going in that they were going to have more housing projects in the pipeline, so it kind of made more sense for them to keep those funds in-house. They actually are in continued conversations about pooling those funds with Skip, though, but as of right now, they were able to take their funds and fund those two projects. So it allowed us to put more of the funding into the four projects that were recommended by the Advisory Board. The Executive Board ultimately agreed with the recommendations made by the Advisory Board, and so a total of 4.1 million was allocated. And you can see up there the various funding sources. I think it's C-TAC who, who puts the $300,000 in from the general fund. Everyone else is utilizing 1406 or 1590. These are the four recommended projects. A few of them might look familiar to you because they have received Skip funds in the past. Mercy Housing Northwest is a project in Buryan. It's 91 units. That, that received a $2 million funding allocation. The project you're probably most interested in is the one in Kent, and that's TWG, the multifamily project with 251 units, targeting 30 to 80% AMI. It includes some set-asides for families who are at risk of homelessness, and it will include wraparound services for those families on site. This project was awarded funded, awarded funding last year as well. The multi-service centers, White River Apartments Project in Auburn is a 24-unit rehab project. It has three units that are up to 30% AMI, so a little bit of a mix with 45% AMI for 18 of the units, and five up to 60. And then the final project is another Habitat for Humanity project in Buryan, 40 units of affordable ownership, 20 of those for 50% AMI, 20 for up to 80% AMI. This was also a previously awarded project. So all of those have received funding prior to this year, except for the third project. The next couple charts really just show you where, oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Thank you, Councilmember. Marina, a question about the TWG project. How did they set the 30 to 80% AMI? Because it seems like it's kind of a big range, and is there a percentage of like these many apartment, or these many housing units, I guess, are for?
I'm gonna let Kristin jump in on that question. She's a lot more familiar with the specifics of the project, I think, of this part.
Yeah, so again, the question is, how did they select how many apartment units would be at 30% AMI versus the other levels? A lot of that comes down to their layered funding strategy. So when you finance an affordable housing project, it's, it's not as simple as going to the bank and getting a loan. You're looking more like a layered cake, where you have some light tech funds, which are through a state program that operated on behalf of the federal government. You have county and other housing authority and all these other programs at the state level that kind of all layer up to each other. And then the Skip Housing Capital Fund is really a, a unique opportunity where we get to direct more as a city than otherwise. And so those numbers are really determined based on what other funding programs are willing to pay for and finance. And so that, that unit breakdown is based on how they can make their pro forma analysis work, as well as how they can meet the funding obligations or requirements from all of those different funders that they're seeking funding from. The 30% AMI and below households are really for families that are either at risk of being unsheltered or have previously been unsheltered. And the, the developer, TWG, is partnering with Mercy, sorry, Vision House for supportive services as well with those families as caseload managers and additional family support.
Thank you. Sorry, the follow-up. How many units are at 30%? Do we know?
Right now, I think it's just about 30 units, maybe. The numbers honestly fluctuate a little bit as the project evolves because we're, they're dealing with different funding requirements layered on at different times, but I think they're at 30 units right now.
Okay, so 30 units approximately, about 30%. And then there's gonna be some 50% AMI, I'm guessing, and then some 80%, so mostly like middle housing.
So 80% and below is considered affordable housing in terms of it is requiring subsidies of some sort. For this project, we've talked with the developer, and they're saying, really, market rate rents are coming in at about 70 to 80% AMI. So all of these actually are considered affordable housing, but when you have the King County AMI, some of them will be considered a little bit, a little bit, they're actually considered more affordable than King County as a whole.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
I'm glad she's here. The next couple charts just really show you where the funds are coming from for each jurisdiction. So those are the three cities who are pooling 1590 funds, so you can see exactly where Kent dollars are flowing this year. And then we have a little bit of unallocated and carryover from last year. And then these are the 1406 funds. And again, you can kind of see where they've channeled the dollars. The, the requirements for 1406 and 1590 are slightly different, so they have to be really careful about where they fund projects out of 1590 versus 1406. The affordability is a little bit different. And then this is C-TAC, who actually ended up contributing general fund dollars to Skip so that they could also be a participant in the pooling. And that is really all we have for the presentation. We're happy to answer questions, any of the ones that are specific to housing or comprehensive plan or anything like that. I'll definitely pull Kristin back up again.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for this information. It's great to see a Kent project on here. And we made that tough decision as a council to put that money towards it. So like to see that. This is an expensive project, especially the one in Kent, and these funds are being contributed over time. Is there a timeline when it's possible to see this completed?
Completed.
Or, or have them, because I know it's a long process.
Yeah, so the project is in for development review right now. They have asked to put the project on hold from the development review side from ECD, not because of anything we're doing, but they are running into some gap financing issues that they're trying to resolve right now. And so, I mean, if they had the financing, they would be well on their way through entitlement process and ready to start breaking ground, but they don't want to move too far until they know that they have the certainty of that gap financing right now. So really, it is dependent on closing that final, that final bucket of funding in that, in that amount. I think right now they're on target for hopefully finishing permits through this year and next year, and then breaking ground next year and moving forward into construction.
Thank you.
That's a great question, Councilmember Troutner. It's important to remember that many of these projects are millions of dollars, and so it can take a few years just for them to get all the funding that they need. So, yeah, thanks for clarifying that. Are there any other questions? Okay, all right, then I will read the motion. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2084 authorizing the execution of agreements by the administering agency for South King Housing and Homelessness Partners to fund affordable housing projects.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay, up next, we have Brian Higgins to talk about Earthworks Canyon.
Great to be back. Brian Higgins, Senior Parks Capital Project Manager, here to talk about one of my favorite projects that I've been working on in the city for quite a while now. So this is our, kind of our annual work with EarthCorps, who's been working with us now since 2021. Just to remind you where we're at in the city here, we're at Mill Creek Canyon Earthworks Park, which is just right over here to the east. And so for the past about four years, we've been kind of incrementally making large progress on our trail rehabilitation project within the canyon. And so our, you know, our past successes in the last couple of years have really gotten us to a place where we have a really nice trail, and it's walkable and a great hike. Just to highlight a little bit of the work that we did last year, so if you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we had a slide in a kind of a challenging section of trail. So we worked with EarthCorps last year to do this repair here. So you can see kind of some work in progress on the right-hand side, and then the completed, us looking at the completed work there this fall. So the work that we've been doing in 2025 kind of builds on all the work that we've been doing over the last few years. And so kind of the way we, we sequenced our work is that when we started working in the canyon, we started working on the most difficult areas first, and, and the areas that needed the most help first. And so as we've kind of gone along, we've, we're down to a really good, you know, main trail now. We're still just having a few areas where we have to make some trail reroutes. We have some muddy areas. We're gonna be doing some general tread repairs on some areas that we still haven't gotten to yet. And then also, kind of new for this year is we're gonna be formalizing some, formalizing some existing loop trails up here that are off of 97th Place. And there are trails that have been in place for a long time, but haven't been formalized and haven't been used a lot. And I think one more thing to note for this year's work is we're also gonna have support from EarthCorps for a day of volunteer work party there in the canyon. So that'll be in conjunction with the Park Operations Division. So happy to answer any questions on the whole, all the work we've been doing here or this year's project as well.
Any questions for Brian? Okay, I just have to state that I know it's not Earthworks Canyon, and it's Earthworks Park and Mill Creek Canyon.
Yeah.
In case someone wants to point that out. All right, no questions for Brian? Okay, I have a motion. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for park trail restoration services with EarthCorps, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you so much. Back to you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Now we have Public Works. Councilmember Fincher, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items tonight. First one is going to be, we're going to hear from Alex Morello about the Flood Control Subarea, Subregional Opportunity Fund.
All right. Chair Cowherd, committee members, good afternoon. Alex Morello, Engineering Supervisor in Public Works. Today, we have before you a, an update to our King County Subregional Opportunity Fund. You might remember, we did take this item to you in October to describe the funding allocation. And so this is gonna be an update to that presentation. The map that you're seeing ahead of you are three projects that I'm gonna be highlighting, and all of which are supported in part by the King County Subregional Opportunity Fund. This, this slide is the Mill Creek Flood Plane Reconnection Project. The image on the left is roughly the current conditions, and then to the right is what we are proposing to do. On the left side, you can see the blue line running north-south. That's generally the alignment of the creek. It's very concise. It's right there up against the backside of the homes. And so the project shown on the right shows that we're taking this creek channel to the east into the natural area, then connecting back in. And that's gonna provide increased flood risk reduction, improved conveyance capacity. In addition, you can see all the logs that we're gonna be placing out there, tons of plantings. It's gonna be an incredible project. We did receive, some great news, last week, we did receive our core permit, and that was a huge milestone for the team. We are continuing to pursue We are continuing to pursue other permits, including a permit from the Department of Washington, Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. And soon after getting all of the permits, the next phase would be to relocate utilities and then construct the floodplain channel. So looking forward to advancing this project. The next project we'd like to highlight is the James Street Woodford Avenue Storm Connection. The image on the left is a plan view, bird's eye view of the site, and then to the right is the street view of that. And again, this project is to provide a more direct connection of our stormwater facilities directly into the James Street Pump Station. Roughly three weeks ago, we did open bids, and, and we partnered this project with the 81st Avenue South Pump Station for better bid pricing. And it was, the project was awarded about two weeks ago at the council meeting. So we are currently working with a contractor to execute a contract and start the work this summer. So looking forward to that. Final project here is the Earthworks Sediment Pond Culvert Replacement Project. This is at Earthworks Park. You'd walk past it and not even know these culverts were here. But this is a very important facility for our stormwater crews to inspect and remove accumulated sediment in here ahead of their wet season activities. It does prevent any sediment from accumulating into the downstream reaches of Mill Creek, which affects its capacity. On the north side of that sediment pond are two 30-inch twin-barrel culverts. If you look closely, you can see that they are deteriorating, so they need to be replaced, likely to be replaced with a large, single-span culvert wider to improve not only conveyance and storage capacity, but also improve fish passage. So we've been working closely with our parks team on this. We've selected a consultant, and we are working to execute a, an agreement with them to perform preliminary designs. So that's the Earthworks Sediment Pond Project. Now, this is the revised funding allocation. So if you might remember, we did come to you in October. The previous allocation was roughly $229,000. Then in early December, the King County Flood Control District increased their tax levy. So as a result, we got an increase in the funding allocation to roughly $327,000. So that's, if I did my math right, roughly $98,000. We'd like to use that towards the Earthworks Sediment Pond Culvert Replacement Project. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Very good presentation. Any questions or comments? All of these are going to help, there's more steps to help remedy some of the flooding that we've had, and also helping our habitat. So, and I know some of these permits can have taken us literally years to acquire, so good work. It was information only, no vote needed, so thank you very much. And we're going to hear from David Payne next, and it's also information on the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program.
Good afternoon, council members. Good to see you all again. David Payne, City Transportation Planner, presenting on the 2026-2031 TIP update. As a reminder of where we are continuing the conversation from January, as we update the TIP each year. Tonight's a preview of the projects that we'll be taking out to the public for proposed additions to the TIP. So we're looking for, for public comments, questions, involvement, engagement over the next couple of weeks, and I'll talk briefly about, about the outreach process that we do each year. This particular year, we're, each year, we add a little bit more, we try to add a little bit more to the process, but the schedule remains the same. We have the, the review and project briefings in January. We've just spent the month of February updating materials, including our story map for engagement and outreach. We're previewing the projects tonight. Then we'll take the engagement in April. We'll come back for, with a revision of the proposed TIP document and hopefully adoption in May. For the outreach and engagement, and this is listed on the Story Map tool that we'll be using each year, or that we have been using for the past couple of years. But to give folks a preview, in March, again, we'll be having a poster publicly presented at the Kent Commons of the summary of the projects. We'll be doing the online engagement, both with the, the Story Map tool and the engage.kentwa.gov website, which has translation capabilities. In late March and early April, we'll, we'll be presenting the proposed projects to the Kent Bicycle Advisory Board and the Land Use Planning Board. Their meetings on April 14th and March 31st. And then we'll be back to Committee of the Whole to present as an item for recommendation on the 6th of May, and hopefully, public hearing scheduled for May 20th. So as a reminder for folks who are, who are joining the Transportation Improvement Program conversation, the QR code on the right is a link to the Story Map. If you click on the Story Map, you'll see that these are all of the projects that we have in the currently adopted TIP. And what is the TIP again? It's the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. It's really the department's work program or anticipated work program over the next six years for what we think, for ongoing projects and for what we think is reasonably expected for us to take on. So now, without further ado, we'll be previewing the, the projects we're proposing to take out for comments at this time. So this map gives an overview of where the projects are located. So I'll, I'll walk through each of them in turn, and then I've got separate information on separate slides detailing each of the projects. This gives a good overview of them. So the first is the Railway Crossing, Railroad Corridor Crossing Safety Study. So council may know that the city of Kent has three of the state's higher crossings of interest, we would call them. And in the, through partnerships, we've been able to make improvements to a number of, of our crossings. In last year, we entered into a partnership with BNSF to, to approach, and, and partners with Amtrak and Sound Transit to approach the Federal Railroad Administration with, with a proposal to, to do a railway corridor crossing safety study for the seven crossings in, in Kent. So I'm happy to report out that we've heard from FRA that they're recommending an award for that project, and we're, we're looking forward to getting more detailed information from them. We, we thought we were getting a little bit more information in February, but we're, we're still looking forward to additional detail this time. So we'll definitely be bringing that back to council once we have additional direction. So that, that funding would be for outreach, feasibility study, feasibility analysis, alternatives analysis for up to three grade separations amongst those seven. So very exciting. And again, we want to thank the partnerships that we've been having with, with BNSF Railway, Sound Transit, and Amtrak for their support in the pursuit of that grant. Getting ahead of myself, the second project is for Fourth Avenue Improvements along Harrison, including an RRFB. That's number two. The, the third is for Reef Road on the segment between Military to 38th Avenue South. And the fourth is an as-yet-to-be-determined sidewalk gap project. And I'll, I'll talk about, again, each of those in turn with their own slides coming right up. But again, for those folks who are joining the conversation, these are all projects that we recommend based on our, our continuing emphasis on, on safety, equity, connections, and partnership input. These are the, the goals of our Transportation Master Plan and the Comprehensive Plan, as well as criteria that helps us be competitive for these grant pursuits. I did get ahead of myself. This, this is a slide for the, the safety project, the BNSF Railway Corridor Crossing Safety. So a little bit more detail of the, the specific and the mile postings for each of the crossings through Kent to evaluate the seven crossings for improvements. And again, we want to thank our partnerships with, with BNSF, Sound Transit, and Amtrak for, for making this possible. Second project is, again, Fourth Avenue Improvements. You can see a detail of the, on the left of the crossings, the roadways crossings of Fourth Avenue through downtown. So this would be an overall project to potentially reduce crossing distances at those locations, to add lead pedestrian intervals at signals, or other safety improvements as have come out of either the local road safety plan or the Target Zero Action Plan. This was one of the corridors seen as an opportunity in, in the plan process. So we, we believe that we can be more competitive for improvements here, including sidewalk improvements. If we're doing improvements to the crossings, we want to be able to, to take another look at the sidewalks adjacent to the, the roadway. And you can see the illustration of the, of an RRFB crossing at Harrison. That's an illustrative in the lower left-hand corner. Then two multimodal connection projects. I'm going to see if the animation comes in. There we go. The first project is Reef Road. This is one of the projects from the Transportation Master Plan. This would be for the next segment of the roadway to improve from approximately, from Military Road, the Military Road intersection to 38th Avenue South and the Fenwick, West Fenwick Park, to, to the west of West Fenwick Park. This would be to add multimodal connections by repurposing the shoulder. The roadway currently has a wide shoulder, but no dedicated sidewalk. And this would extend the, the bicycle facilities from the west to the east, and we think that would be a, a good competitive project for a couple of funding sources that we typically pursue. And then the last project recommending for, for comments, one of the comments, a number of the comments that we received through the Target Zero Action Plan process were for requesting sidewalks. And to remind folks who are watching, we found through the plan that a lack of sidewalks does not contribute to, to a safety issue, or what we were finding through that study is that where folks are, where we're having crashes is where sidewalks are. So they're not, they're not necessarily related, that there's, where there's a gap, that there's a safety concern. But we did hear from folks that wanting sidewalk is an additional interest. So the question is then, what next? We've got a lot of projects in the TMP, but what do we do next to, to make sure that we're still lining up additional projects to pursue that we know will be competitive for funding? So what we're doing, or what we've done, what we're in the process of, and we'd like input on it, is we've taken the input from folks that we've heard from over the course of the last year, and we're adding in that technical data, crash data, level of traffic stress, equity considerations, where underserved communities are, as well as where projects are feasible, closing gaps, or closer to schools and parks and transit from a spatial perspective. And we're, we're looking to bring some of those recommendations back to council in May. And with that, I am happy to take any questions or...
Questions? Good news. Thank you very much. That was information only, so again, no vote needed. That is it for us, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you to everybody. And with that, we are adjourned until 5:15 for council workshop. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for March 4, 2025. And we have one item on our agenda: Information Technology Update. And get started with our IT Director, Mike Carrington.
Awesome. Thank you, Council President. Greetings, Council members. Good to be with you this afternoon. It's been a while. Mike Carrington, IT Director, with me is James Endicott, IT Deputy Director, as well as Brian Rambunga, who is over our IT PMO or Project Management Office. And today, we've got planned for you an update for the Information Technology Group. There's actually two critical areas that we're kind of focusing our update and presentation on. The first one centers around cybersecurity and reemphasis and the need to underscore the importance of that. We recently went through an organizational department reorg in an effort to make sure that we were configured in such a way that we could, as a department, concentrate on cybersecurity as well as an effort on our part to try and help ensure that we could bring several disparate divisions or groups that we had together so that there could be a reemphasis on not only that security, but much like the OneKent theme, that we could look to bring those groups together in a more collaborative and tighter unity organizational configuration. So those are things that have kind of underscored what we've been doing recently to set the table for what we're going to be presenting for you. Okay, next slide. So this encapsulate, this next slide encapsulate the reorganization that we went through. You can see on the top, there's a little legend there for the groups that you see denoted here. The Customer Service and Operations Group, which had the Service Desk and the Business Systems Group, our Business Systems Analyst primarily as a part of that group, was combined with the previously separate Infrastructure Security and Operations Center that housed our Network Operations Center as well as our Security Operations Center Group. And now, that entire group is underneath James. And so far, so good with that new configuration under James's leadership. We've been making real positive progress that we're real enthusiastic about what the future might hold for us to continue to make positive gains, especially in the area of security. Okay, next slide. Just a couple of quick slides to set the table for you. Some context, kind of shows you how much it takes to get done, what we're going to be presenting to you. So from an operations perspective, we're at about a $12 million annual clip for operations. And the next slide just shows from a capital outlay perspective, we're at roughly $4 million per year for approved budget for this current biennium. Okay, so that sets the backdrop or the cadence a little bit for what we're going to be presenting. Three of us will be chiming in and out during discussions, especially in an effort to make sure that we answer and address your questions. And with that, I'll go ahead and hand the mic and the floor over to James.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, everyone, for the time tonight. So I wanted to take a minute and kind of go through some security updates and compare to what we had presented last time. So just kind of stepping back and reminding everyone, what is Zero Trust and why do we do it? Right? And as a reminder, Zero Trust is really, as simple as we can put it, is we trust nothing and verify everything. It's the simplest way to say it. And so it has us really looking across our network and all of our services to ensure that everything is validated and verified and authorized to access resources and people and services on the network. Why do we do it? Well, we want to reduce the overall risk, obviously, to the city. That's the most important thing. Some of the benefits out of it are we can see lower insurance premiums. On that note, if you guys remember a couple of weeks ago, Elaine from HR had mentioned that there was a reduction in our cybersecurity insurance, liability insurance, which is great news for the city. It was about a 30% a year savings. But also, with that came an increase in the amount of coverage that we had. So it wasn't like our premiums went down and we lost coverage. We actually had premiums reduced and we got expanded coverage, which was great. Another part of the Zero Trust is ensuring that we're meeting regulatory compliance, right? Our biggest thing, obviously, we have an HR department. We have HIPAA. We have processed credit cards. And you know, the biggest one that we talk about is CGIS, right? It's the Criminal Justice Information Systems that we have to ensure compliance for. You know, we always talk about it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when. And so for us, it's always about improving our incident response process. And so having a Zero Trust approach gives us a much easier way to manage it because it's kind of a standardized approach. And then the last thing is this, we do it because this is what helps strengthen the public trust in us and the services that we deliver. So you guys may remember a while ago, I showed this, you know, pillar approach. And these are kind of the foundations of Zero Trust. Today, I'm going to highlight this one, sorry, right here, these a couple of stars. And we're just going to kind of talk through them really quick. The ZTA, the first one on the left, is really just a reflection that when we came in last time, it was about a year and a half ago, we talked about we were going to be doing Zero Trust. We hadn't really formalized it yet. And so now, this is just a note that we have formalized the framework and our roadmap, you know, which impacts our budget and our resources as we go forward. And so we have, you know, been able to plan out the next, you know, three to five years of work and as well as budgeting aspect. So the first one that I want to talk about, and you guys all have a companion sheet that was given to you that kind of breaks out all the individual projects that are related to the Zero Trust. So the first one that I'm going to talk about is Privileged Access Management. Privileged Access Management on the surface is really about how do we protect IT's privileged accounts? So all technical staff have permissions that allow us to do things that are above and beyond the average user. And you know, in a world where those credentials are ever compromised, we want to make sure that we protect them. So we've implemented what we call a PAM. And that allows us to, for example, rotate privileged passwords very frequently. So if a privileged password is ever compromised, the worst it can happen is eight hours and then the password expires and it gets a new one. So that's one example. The other part of that project that we were able to accomplish was reducing the number of domain admin accounts. And if you think of a domain admin account, the easiest way for me to explain it, it's a godlike account on the network. It pretty much can do anything. And every network needs one because that's how we manage things. But we were able to kind of pull those back to a really, really small number because, again, the more you have, the more risk that you have. Next one I'd like to highlight is our Secure Email Gateway. So this is, just think of it as advanced email filtering. Everybody gets an email that they don't like, right? Whether it be spam or whether it be phishing. So having a dedicated secure email gateway is going to allow us to be more proactive in making sure that spam is not getting delivered to the mailboxes. There's also, you know, I'm always hesitant to use this because it's kind of a buzzword today, but there's AI aspects to it where it can do analyzing of email. It can see patterns. It can see how things are being delivered. And it can make decisions in the background on how does mail get delivered? Do we block it? Do we pull it? Things like that. So we have email filtering here now. We just don't have advanced email filtering. The other part that Secure Email Gateway will bring to the city is our ability to protect data going out. So if somebody sends something through an email that they're not permitted to do, maybe HR has a medical form or something like that, it would prevent them from sending that type of sensitive data out. So it's a big step forward in our email
Good afternoon, welcome to Kent City Council Workshop for March 4, 2025. And we have one item on our agenda, information technology update. And get started with our IT Director, Mike Carrington.
Awesome, thank you, Council President. Greetings, Council Members. Good to be with you this afternoon, it's been a while. Mike Carrington, IT Director, with me is James Endicott, IT Deputy Director, as well as Brian Rambunga, who is over our IT PMO, or Project Management Office. And today, we've got planned for you an update for the Information Technology Group. There's actually two critical areas that we're kind of focusing our update and presentation on. The first one centers around cybersecurity and reemphasis, and the need to underscore the importance of that. We recently went through an organizational department reorg in an effort to make sure that we were configured in such a way that we could, as a department, concentrate on cybersecurity, as well as an effort on our part to try and help ensure that we could bring several disparate divisions or groups that we had together so that there could be a reemphasis on not only that security, but much like the One Kent theme, that we could look to bring those groups together in a more collaborative and tighter unity organizational configuration. So those are things that have kind of underscored what we've been doing recently to set the table for what we're going to be presenting for you. Okay? Next slide. So this encapsulate, this next slide encapsulate the reorganization that we went through. You can see on the top, there's a little legend there for the groups that you see denoted here. The Customer Service and Operations Group, which had the Service Desk and the Business Systems Group, our Business Systems Analyst primarily is a part of that group, was combined with the previously separate Infrastructure Security and Operations Center that housed our Network Operations Center, as well as our Security Operations Center Group. And now that entire group is underneath James. And so far, so good with that new configuration under James's leadership. We've been making real positive progress that we're real enthusiastic about what the future might hold for us to continue to make positive gains, especially in the area of security. Okay, next slide. Just a couple of quick slides to set the table for you, some context. Kind of shows you how much it takes to get done, what we're going to be presenting to you. So from an operations perspective, we're at about a $12 million annual clip for operations. And the next slide just shows from a capital outlay perspective, we're at roughly $4 million per year for approved budget for this current biennium. So that sets the backdrop or the cadence a little bit for what we're going to be presenting. Three of us will be chiming in and out during discussions, especially in an effort to make sure that we answer and address your questions. And with that, I'll go ahead and hand the mic and the floor over to James.
Great, thank you, Mike. Thank you everyone for the time tonight. So I wanted to take a minute and kind of go through some security updates and compare to what we had presented last time. So just kind of stepping back and reminding everyone, what is Zero Trust and why do we do it? Right? And as a reminder, Zero Trust is really, as simple as we can put it, is we trust nothing and verify everything. It's the simplest way to say it. And so it has us really looking across our network and all of our services to ensure that everything is validated and verified and authorized to access resources and people and services on the network. Why do we do it? Well, we want to reduce the overall risk, obviously, to the city. That's the most important thing. Some of the benefits out of it are, we can see lower insurance premiums. On that note, if you guys remember, a couple of weeks ago, Elaine from HR had mentioned that there was a reduction in our cybersecurity insurance, liability insurance, which was great news for the city. It was about a 30% a year savings. But also with that came an increase in the amount of coverage that we had. So it wasn't like our premiums went down and we lost coverage. We actually had premiums reduced and we got expanded coverage, which was great. Another part of the Zero Trust is ensuring that we're meeting regulatory compliance, right? Our biggest thing, obviously, we have an HR department, we have HIPAA, we have processed credit cards. And you know, the biggest one that we talk about is CGIS, right? It's the Criminal Justice Information Systems that we have to ensure compliance for. You know, we always talk about, it's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when. And so for us, it's always about improving our incident response process. And so having a Zero Trust approach gives us a much easier way to manage it because it's kind of a standardized approach. And then the last thing is this, we do it because this is what helps strengthen the public trust in us and the services that we deliver. So you guys may remember a while ago, I showed this, you know, pillar approach. And these are kind of the foundations of Zero Trust. Today, I'm going to highlight this one, sorry, right here, these, a couple of stars. And we're just going to kind of talk through them really quick. The ZTA, the first one on the left, is really just a reflection that when we came in last time, it was about a year and a half ago, we talked about we were going to be doing Zero Trust. We hadn't really formalized it yet. And so now, this is just a note that we have formalized the framework and our roadmap, you know, which impacts our budget and our resources as we go forward. And so we have, you know, been able to plan out the next, you know, three to five years of work and as well as budgeting aspect. So the first one that I want to talk about, and you guys all have a companion sheet that was given to you, that kind of breaks out all the individual projects that are related to the Zero Trust. So the first one that I'm going to talk about is Privilege Access Management. Privilege Access Management on the surface is really about how do we protect IT's privileged accounts? So all technical staff have permissions that allow us to do things that are above and beyond the average user. And you know, in a world where if those credentials are ever compromised, we want to make sure that we protect them. So we've implemented what we call a PAM. And that allows us to, for example, rotate privileged passwords very frequently. So if a privileged password is ever compromised, the worst that can happen is eight hours, and then the password expires and it gets a new one. So that's one example. The other part of that project that we were able to accomplish was reducing the number of domain admin accounts. And if you think of a domain admin account, and the easiest way for me to explain it, it's a godlike account on the network. It pretty much can do anything. And every network needs one, because that's how we manage things. But we were able to kind of pull those back to a really, really small number because again, the more you have, the more risk that you have. Next one I'd like to highlight is our secure email gateway. So this is, just think of it as advanced email filtering. Everybody gets an email that they don't like, right? Whether it be spam or whether it be phishing. So having a dedicated secure email gateway is going to allow us to be more proactive in making sure that spam is not getting delivered to the mailboxes. There's also, you know, I'm always hesitant to use this because it's kind of a buzzword today, but there's AI aspects to it where it can do analyzing of email, it can see patterns, it can see how things are being delivered, and it can make decisions in the background on how does mail get delivered? Do we block it? Do we pull it? Things like that. So we have email filtering here now, we just don't have advanced email filtering. The other part that Secure Email Gateway will bring to the city is our ability to protect data going out. So if somebody sends something through an email that they're not permitted to do, maybe HR has a medical form or something like that, it would prevent them from sending that type of sensitive data out. So it's a big step forward in our email security. So penetration testing. I want to kind of note that this was a very substantial leap forward for us. Penetration tests, so everybody understands, is this is a test that we pay an outside vendor to come in and in essence, try to hack us. Okay? They do it in a way that they have permissions, and we are aware of it. During this time, there's only about three of us in the city that were aware of this because we don't want to tip off our staff because we want them to just basically be normal. We want our controls to kind of do their work. But we set a scope of work up with the vendor. They come in, they don't tell us what day they're going to start, we don't know anything. And they go through and they test every aspect of our network. So looking at it, they tested externally, they test internally on our network. So like they've compromised the network, and then they're in there, they're trying to do lateral movement. They test our wireless network, can they join it? Can they move across the wireless network? They do a review of our Active Directory environment. And for everybody's awareness, Active Directory is, it's a directory service. It's kind of how we control people's permissions to the network. So if that's ever compromised, somebody could give themselves permissions that they should not have. So it's a really critical part of our network. And they did this through a number of different avenues. The social engineering is the big one, right? Through phishing, which everybody has probably heard of, and vishing. And then we actually did some physical security attacks where we actually had them put on a uniform with a badge. And they actually presented themselves as a Cisco Network Engineer, and they went to a couple of facilities. And they showed their credentials and said they had to do work. So it was very, very interesting how they go about all of that.
So what outcome of some of that?
Awesome, great question.
Just kind of teasing us, wanting to know the end results.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So I do want to say, right now, these are all preliminary, right? It's a very detailed report that we get, it's very technical. And so we've kind of gone through and pulled out what we would consider the kind of the salient and important points. And I do really want to stress that we put this off for a little bit because, you know, in the early part of our security journey, we knew, we had a lot of low hanging fruit that we needed to take care of. And we felt like if we brought them in too early, they're going to tell us stuff that we already know. So we spent, you know, a couple of years fixing all that stuff and saying, okay, now we feel like we're at a good point. The value, the feedback they're going to give us at that point, it's going to be super valuable. So we brought them in, and some of the strong points that I want to share, effective endpoint detect and respond. So if a person clicks on a malicious link on their desktop, the computers are shutting it down, like they will not allow that to happen. They tested for lateral movement, meaning if they compromised a workstation, they could not jump from a workstation to another workstation, or from a workstation to a server. So we blocked and stopped that lateral movement. Again, they gave us kudos for having unique domain accounts. As I mentioned earlier, how we've implemented PAM, we've locked all that down. So they commented on that. It was a couple of interesting notes. The email filtering blocked all of their phishing tests. So there's, in the ethical hacking world, there is something that's called black, black box or white box. Black box is basically, they're doing something. We don't know what it is, they're doing it. And they don't have any interaction with us or anything. Well, the beautiful thing about some of the security defenses that we have is that our tools stop them. They could not do anything. So they actually had to call us and say, hey, can you please whitelist us so we can do our work? So that was a really kind of good feedback, right? That it showed us, okay, we're on the right track. And then a couple of other little pieces, they notated that, as annoying as it may be, the email banner serves a very specific purpose. And again, they give us kudos for that. The last one that we'll talk about here in a few minutes, and a later slide, is our security awareness training and communication. They went out of their way to say that our security awareness, our ISP program, and the way that we communicate and how we train our staff was above average for an organization. So they were really happy about that. Now, obviously, with the good comes the bad, right? And nobody ever, I can tell you this, if you go through a penetration test and you do not come out with a negative, I would be questioning the testers, right? Because this is what they do. The nice thing is, there was a few, what we would consider notes of areas that we have to focus on. But I would tell you that almost all of it, if not all of it, revolved around our legacy applications. And those are things that, you know, I hate to say it like this, but some days, these are things that are out of our control because of, you know, resources, budgets, time, whatever that may be. But those are things that we are taking into account and moving forward. Does that answer your question, Council Member?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, so security awareness training. This one has been, hopefully, for you guys have noticed, over the last couple of weeks, we started communicating out our new training platform. It's Hox Hunt. So about a year ago, we were with No Before. And No Before, prior to, six months ago, we spent about nine years, almost nine years with No Before. And they were a great company. And what was happening is, is that as the landscape was changing, they weren't adopting and changing with the landscape and how they train. And what they were falling into was, just to check the box, I get hired, I watch, you know, four eight-minute videos, and then it goes into my employee file, and I'm good to go. And then you just do, once a year, you do some follow-up training. And yes, we had people that were successfully identifying things, but they weren't truly understanding the why of it. And we just felt like we were missing opportunities there. And so as you start to study the psychology of cybersecurity, you realize that if we can start going after the behaviors, the why, we are going to be far more effective. So we set out on kind of a journey to look at different solutions. And one of those solutions happens to be Hox Hunt. It's kind of an interesting name, but they are, they say culturally and behaviorally driven on how they deliver their training. Some of the things that were really important to us for the training was, for me, one of the things that I don't like is when we're delivering training, is if you get a training notice and you have to stop, you have to go to another web portal, you have to log in, you have to find the video, right? And it becomes a little bit of a hassle. And so we were like, hey, we want to try to find something that's delivered in a much easier, much more like organic way. And so Hox Hunt now literally comes into your email, and they're what we call micro trainings. They're 25 to 35 second, just little training opportunities. And then the other part of it is that we kind of felt with No Before, what was happening was is people were putting a negative connotation with phishing tests, where like, oh, they busted me, IT busted me, I'm going to get in trouble. And that was starting to be a little bit of concern to us because we don't want people to be embarrassed of it. We don't want people to be fearful of it. We look at these where there's opportunities to learn. If you missed it, you didn't pass, you know, you didn't get it right the first time, it takes you forward and still tries to train you. Okay, you may have missed it, but what did you miss? Why did you miss it? So it tries to build, again, a better relationship with that process. So what I'm going to do here really quick, I'm just going to give you a quick little example of a Hox Hunt. And this is just kind of an introduction, talks about it really quick, it's about a minute and a half long.
As Chief Information Security Officer, I get paid to protect my company against cyber attacks. It's actually pretty cool, but it's getting harder, which is less cool. And those automated awareness programs, it's not helpful. They send like four generic phishing emails, and most employees ignore.
Oh, a little bit.
And when somebody actually clicks, they get forced into embarrassing training programs that feel more like a punishment. Meanwhile, cyber criminals are getting more sophisticated, with personalized attacks that pick off my employees like sitting ducks. Especially Bob. So I tried Hox Hunt. Hox Hunt goes beyond cybersecurity awareness and actually changes behavior, rewarding good clicks and coaching away the bad. Hox Hunt's adaptive learning model trains each employee based on their role, background, and skill level. So simulations feel like real-world attacks. If they fail a simulation, they get a quick training that's actually sort of fun. And when they spot an attack, they get positive reinforcement that locks in the behavior change. Whenever an employee suspects an email might be a scam, Hox Hunt will tell them instantly, providing a dopamine rush that gets your people to click, learn, and protect your company. Here's the magic part. Hox Hunt's adaptive model gets better with every threat reported across the Hox Hunt network, creating a network effect. With millions of people working together to build a human threat detection engine that's more powerful than any platform or process could ever be. Which means these days, the possibilities are endless.
Great, so that's just an introduction to it. Before I turn this mic over to Brian, I just want to take one last second. Just again, kudos to a couple of groups, I should say, executive leadership, you guys, the continuing to support, the prioritization of security. It's been very impactful and it's very much appreciated. And then all of these things that we do are not possible without all the employees at the city, right? The technical team that implements them, all the way down to the line staff. The success of our security program really is top to bottom, and we're super thankful of that. So thank you very much. Yes?
You talk a lot about the system stuff, which I kind of get, I mean, do that plays into like your badge? I mean, that's part of security, right? The people who access to the system, then people who may leave their computer unsecure, if somebody could walk in, I mean, how do you take care of that type from a security perspective?
So it's a great question. So, and we'll talk about it actually in some other slides. The facilities, programs that we're going through with the new buildings, you know, coming online, this is giving us some opportunity to kind of look on how we do certain things. And badging is one of those things, right? There's a world where, you know, we've already introduced MFA, right? Like everybody knows. But there's also a world where if we wanted to step up, we could actually tie your badge to your laptop. So if you got more than five feet away, it would literally lock you, lock you out. You know, we always want to make sure that we're balancing security with a risk level, right? And somebody who maybe is a front desk that doesn't deal with critical information, maybe they don't need that, but maybe our police officers or HR, you know, things like that. So if we do those types of things, we would always go through that full kind of assessment of what's that risk or ratio. Yeah. Any other questions? All right, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, James. Good evening, everybody. James, on, next slide. Okay, well, I'm here to kind of talk with everybody about our capital projects and the technology roadmap as it relates to all of the technology initiatives for every department here at the city. To take a quick trip down memory lane, you may have seen this diagram before, but this is our technology roadmap as of 2019. And as you can see, you know, we have a lot of business systems replacements here that relate to some of the legacy business systems that we needed to replace. We do have a lot of green checkboxes that apply to just about 90% of those projects that we see on the technology roadmap. Quick mention that there are a couple of projects on this 2019 roadmap that do not have a green checkbox. And that really just applies to a exercise with the departments, with the city leaders, that we had gone through to either reprioritize that technology initiative and slide it to the right and/or get through it in our current and/or make it potentially a future project that we work through.
Number seven, did you go back there?
Number seven.
Yeah.
MyBuildingPermits. Good question. That is left open. That was actually de-scoped from our initial Amanda kind of permitting system replacement project. And I believe, Matt Gilbert is here. We do have a little bit of backup by way of some of department leadership and ELT to assist with some of the explanation for the technology systems in their area. Matt?
Sure, I would agree with Brian's comment to that one. Point, MyBuildingsPermits.com was considered as a possible add-on to the Amanda system. However, as that system has evolved, and other systems have also evolved, as he said, it was de-scoped.
Matt, you gotta, your voice needs to be recorded.
Sorry about that. Just as Brian said, MyBuildingsPermit.com was considered in the early phases of the Amanda implementation as a possible partnership with the Amanda system. It's something that's used in some other jurisdictions. What we found from talking to other jurisdictions is that that's becoming less tenable as the technology changes. And so that was de-scoped early on. So I was a little bit surprised by it, but I think it's appropriate that we move on from that.
Okay. And again, that technology roadmap just kind of helps to set the stage as we, you know, speak to the roadmap and technology initiatives in the past, present, and the future. This is a quick splash page or a starburst page of some of the projects that were recently completed and deployed as of the previous biennium, 2023, 2024. As you can see, there are a couple of public works projects out there, like the SCADA system upgrade, as well as our SWIFT compliance system deployment, both related to water quality and compliance around water quality, monitoring and controlling for our pump stations and our water stations. We also have a couple of custom-developed applications that continue to go through enhancements year over year. And those are our utility billing portal, as well as our business license system with finance. And again, to mention a quick few on here, as it relates to public safety, we have the recent deployment of the mobile data computers, which is the ruggedized tablets that the patrol officers use day in and day out, as well as an AV technology refresh for municipal court. And that's their new audio/video system in the courtrooms. And we have new internal cameras for our corrections system and our corrections facility. Okay? I mean, I won't dive into...
Is that what?
Yeah, go ahead.
Before we move on to the current and future, I just want to say, Mike, I think this was like one of the first documents you gave, like anybody gave me when I was appointed. With no check marks, and I remember thinking it was so ambitious, that we really pulled this off. And so just looking at this now with all the check marks, just kudos to all three of you and all of your teams.
Appreciate it.
Because the big body of work that we accomplished.
Just to follow up real quick, so I don't know, all these systems are old, right? And they need to be replaced because, you know, just because of everything evolve. Mike, do you guys track like a return on investment? I mean, because you put these systems in there, and you hope to get some type of investment where it's, you know, I don't know. What is your point around returning investment on the implementation of the new systems?
Yeah. Now, there's, there are a number of metrics that we try and capture, both at the beginning as a project is going through its envision and planning phase. Metrics that we capture as a part of the bulk of the effort that takes place, whether it's a procurement that's going to be done of a commercial off-the-shelf or COTS product, or it's something built-in-house, like several of our financial systems. And then from the perspective of post-implementation and when we're in a maintenance and operations mode, we are, the size of our shop is such that we've got to be mindful of what we're expending those resources on. But we've gotten a lot of feedback, especially from the mayor's office who has a keen interest in that very exact topic or in related sets of subjects. And so we've been adding more and more tools to our repertoire in an effort to try and ensure that as we continue to deploy systems that we're able to capture the data associated with those kinds of things so that we can continue to increase our ability to make data-driven decisions about future systems. So a real good example of that is, over the last couple of years, we've added what we refer to as the have-build-buy process to all, most if not all of our projects. We first look to see, do we already have? So a request or a set of business needs comes to the IT department. We work with the department to try and determine, is there something that we already have that could potentially be either enhanced or maybe an additional module added to it in an effort to try and, at a minimum, address the 80/20 rule for being able to meet those new and emerging business needs? If we don't already, if we have it, then let's not go purchase something that's essentially going to be the same, or even potentially build something that would be redundant. We then look at, if we don't have it, we look at it whether or not it's something that could potentially be built because we do have a small development contingency. That again, has been real successful in the financial space. That, again, has been real successful in the financial space, the finance department at putting solutions in place there. And then, then and only then, if, if those aren't an option, that, do we look to potentially procure or buy something? As a part of that process, we've also started adding more data points that revolve around total cost of ownership, so that we can not only talk about what the deployment cost is going to be, but also what are going to be the recurring costs that typically in the past have revolved around maintenance. But as vendors have gotten more and more sophisticated in their ways to get a hold of your, your money, quote unquote, we've been trying to counter that by making sure that we're taking a holistic approach to, and perspective on what, what it's going to mean to bring that system onboard or to build that system. So, we're making positive progress on that front. We'd love to be able to do more than we do. Lots of times, that also falls into the camp of our, we have one business analyst in our department that, when we do, we've got what we refer to as a resource matrix that we manage all our employees from. That business analyst is always in the red, because he's, A, very talented, and B, is in high demand to be able to provide info like that. But, so, we're, we are doing things on that front, and we want, we look to continue to do more.
Okay. All right, and these next three slides, we'll look to just breeze over. The following slides will look to dive into a couple of these projects and call out specific details that relates to the updates, the scope, schedule, and/or budget for approved project, as well as some things emergent. But, you know, when we look back at the 2019 roadmap, it really just covered from 2018, 2019 to 2022. This current and/or future roadmap now covers just about an eight-to-nine, 10-year period, and covers from 2021, 22 to almost about 2030. So, we have different projects, again, like I had mentioned, that were approved in the biennium, previous biennium as well, that are still active. But what we also list in our current and future roadmap is critical, high-priority programs, and that's really just a subset of projects as it relates to one common goal with a single budget and/or deployment schedule. And we'll look to speak to a couple of those related programs in some of the following slides, to mention some things like our new enterprise architecture program, and programs as it relates to some of the specific activity that are, that we're assisting departments with by way of technology. Okay. So, we'll dive into, from here on out, we'll dive into a little bit more of the specifics as it relates to a couple of the projects that we call out. This slide really just kind of highlights just kind of the sheer number of initiatives that, technology initiatives that IT has on its plate. And that number doesn't intimidate us, really just in the sense of what we have active, what's potentially a request, but it also highlights potentially those that, initiatives that were canceled, as well as completed. But really, kind of going back to just the number, in total, we go through a lot of exercises within IT as we, you know, generally look at our common denominator of resources, in that we can only do so much work, and everything has to be prioritized and/or racked and stacked. But whenever a new request comes in, we typically go through an exercise of, let's take a look at our current work plan, what are our active projects, what do we see potentially in the near term of the future, what can we potentially put on hold, backburner, or maybe just cancel, cancel in general. And we do that as a, as a leadership group, as well as in collaboration with department leaders. Okay? So, as we dive into the departments, yeah, go ahead.
Determine on which ones that you cancel? I mean, how do you go about doing that?
Yeah, that's a good question. Like I had mentioned, really just kind of through that exercise with our departments and their leaders. You know, projects, when we go through potentially that have-build-by process that Mike had mentioned, we will, for example, cancel a project if we already have an existing product. Again, that's just one example. As we continue to prioritize or rack and stack these technology initiatives, sometimes projects will get canceled because more so, they will either die on the vine, it can get wrapped up into the scope of another project, or it does not get funded for a biennial budget request, and another technology can come along and actually absorb that scope. So, there are various different number of reasons that a project can, can actually get canceled, and they do vary between departments.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, parks, this slide really just calls out and highlights kind of the number of technology initiatives with the, within a department. I won't spend too much time on it, but as you can see, we have about 71 total initiatives, and it does vary across the different statuses and/or types of technology initiatives that we have within parks. Their number is particularly high, because we do work closely with, with that department to capture, you know, some of the initiatives that really are owned by that department, not necessarily an actual technology initiative, but it does impact IT by way of its resources. For another program to, to really hone in, as it relates to potential another program that is very, very impactful to the city, and is kind of emergent, and wasn't really called out as a part of the biennial budget process just for IT and technology, is our facilities, construction, and renovation technology support program. And most, if not all of these initiatives are owned by the Parks Department, and it does relate to our facilities movements, move into the new ASB building, the creation of the new Keyhawk building, as well as some others that you, you see here on this slide. So, with that, I'll throw it over to James, as this kind of transitions and leads into sort of the impact that those parks initiatives have on our technology and infrastructure.
Great, thanks, Brian. So, as I kind of mentioned earlier, we're kind of at a unique point with some of the new buildings and facilities that are, that are coming online. It kind of forced us to look at how we're delivering our network services, and that kind of combined with reflecting on how are we doing in our disaster recovery and business continuity plan? And so, with all of this new information kind of coming in, we've taken this opportunity to, to reestablish, how do we do this? And so, this drawing here really reflects a true active data center with a disaster recovery data center, so Keyhawk becomes our new disaster recovery. You know, we call out Centennial Center here, and it's our new public safety building when everything happens. We're building these buildings, these networks to be resilient and redundant. So, if one building comes disconnected from the other buildings, it can stand on its own, and it can function without being able to talk to the rest of the network. And so, there's a lot of work, even though this is a very high-level drawing, there is a lot of work and a lot of projects that are going on behind the scenes to make sure that this plan happens. One of the things I think it's, I'd love to really highlight for you guys, and it's not really on here for you to see, but we do currently, right now, co-locate in SAVI data center in South Seattle, and part of our enterprise rearchitecture is we're going to be able to move out of that colo and save the city a substantial amount of dollars every year, by now splitting it between our, one of our data centers at ASB, and then Keyhawk for disaster recovery. So, it is also a money-saving effort for us on, on our side.
Thank you, James. And then, as it relates to our enterprise architecture program and additional IT initiatives that we'd like to call out, there is one in specific that we do want to highlight for council, and it is our Teams phone deployment, or Teams calling deployment. And it really just looks to replace our existing Mitel/Shortell solution with Microsoft Teams and the Teams phone. This slide, if you look deeper into it, it does highlight for you the, some of the high-level functional, functional pieces of a project, and that being the objective as it relates to the scope. You can see at the bottom of this slide, a proposed timeline for the inception, as well as the deployment of this project, as well as, right in the middle, some of the elements as it speaks to the status and track of the budget. So, you'll see this slide kind of mimicked for all of the projects that, critical projects that we've called out today, as it relates to some of the technology work plan for the departments. Okay? A quick breeze-over slide to show you some of the technology initiatives as it relates to just IT in particular. Okay. Moving on, this is a quick highlight of some of the major technology initiatives as it relates to our administration department. We include the city clerk, as well as communications, as well as the mayor's office. I will highlight, just like the slide before, a bit of detail on our Intranet redesign, as well as the IQM2 replacement project. But a couple of the other call-outs you'll see really do revolve around Laserfish, and that is our records management system that Kim Komodo is our product owner of, and that was deployment of our new records management system as it replaces Oracle. But we've gotten through a few functional enhancements, like including the Washington State Core to automate some of the records retention, and hopefully towards the future, and that are currently on the roadmap, we have integrations with our existing business systems out there, like Workday to Laserfish, like CityWorks to Laserfish, Amanda to Laserfish, as well as potentially using Laserfish as a business process management tool to automate some workflow, like procurement or contract management. And this is a quick highlight for our Intranet redesign, OneKent Hub. Objective here was really just to get off, at least from a technical perspective, get off of Sunset, SharePoint 2010, and migrate Citiespace, our internal communication platform over to SharePoint Online. This was really in conjunction with councils, with the mayor's, sort of new messaging about OneKent, and we are dubbing our new Intranet site, OneKent Hub. We're making a lot of good progress with this project. I'm the project manager overseeing this project right now. We've had a lot of collaborative meetings with departments who really just understand and templatize what their department homepage is going to look like. But again, it's looking to centralize the internal communication on this new platform in conjunction with the OneKent message. And this one might impact council directly. This is our IQM2 project that we got approved for, for this biennium, and this is a new system for council, committee, commission, agenda, meeting minutes management. IQM2 is going to be sunset by the vendor in 2026, so we'll look to work with Kim and her team probably towards Q4, Q3 of this year, to procure and deploy a new solution for managing records for, for council. I am very glad that Kim Komodo, our business owner for the IQM2 system, is here, and I'll defer to her.
Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, I've been doing research with surrounding cities, and probably the, the biggest important feature is its integration with Laserfish. So, right now, when I publish and distribute agendas and minutes, they workflow right into Laserfish, and so that really limits the systems out there. And I've kind of honed it down to, I know at least one that'll work, but I want to look at a couple of more systems.
Thank you, Kim. Okay. Then we'll now move on to finance. Again, a quick highlight by way of a Gantt chart on some of the critical initiatives that we have with finance, those in particular that I think we've already reported out on. We have our DataNow Utility Billing Replacement Project. We have a couple of report-outs on the custom-developed solutions for business license, as well as our tax system. We will also be looking to upgrade our point-of-sale system, which is Inova. And last but not least, we're looking to continue envisioning and planning for the initiative to replace JDE, which really just encompasses our financials. So, first highlight, out of our DataNow Utility Billing System, progress as reports, we're in contract negotiations. We ju, the team just completed vendor evaluation and selection, and upcoming, we're looking to engage legal to finalize the contract package, hopefully initiate a kickoff with the vendor. And quick mention that deployment, a successful deployment of this new utility billing system is dependent on a few other high-functional pieces, including our Inova POS upgrade, an external single-sign-on effort, as well as the re-architecture of our business license system. So, we're all considering sort of those three functional components as dependencies for the rollout of DataNow.
Brian, Mike, the slides that we have, it says the budget requires attention, but yours is showing on track, so...
Oh. There might have been a quick change to that, and yeah, we are on track at 67K.
670. Okay. I was just confused, okay. Yeah. Thank you, Council President. So, as I'm looking at all of these things where it's got the scope, the schedule, and the budget, so all of these things that we're looking at are within the budget that we currently have, or do you anticipate some of these changes to exceed what we've allowed ourselves to spend?
Yeah. So, we actually do have a little bit of backup from some of our finance executives, and if I can defer to either Paula and Molly?
All right. So, with some of these projects, particularly the utility billing project, you will see a budget change come through. They have a project that is currently set up that does have the $670,000 that have been earmarked. I'm going to guess it says on track, because they haven't exceeded it at this point, and really what it's going to come down to is what they negotiate in the contract, and once we can get that contract negotiated, then we can come forward with this. And I would imagine all of the vendors that we looked at were quite a bit more than the $670,000 that you see there, so I would imagine you're going to see a good-sized budget change come through. But again, we don't know until we get the additional negotiations done. And that will hold true with, with some of the other projects like JDE, the financial system, you'll see an additional request for dollars. But when it comes to the business licensing and the utility billing, they have the dollars they need. There shouldn't be any additional dollars coming, being asked for, for that.
Thank you.
Just, just to follow up, I know the, the new Internet, EZ, I think, right? It's less, that was an original part of your plan, right? That always been part of the plan, and that somebody to budget for too, or what?
That's...
So, right now, with vendors such as EZ Fiber, we're, we're in very early negotiations with them. There's discussions going on that we're anticipating are going to include in-kind contributions and considerations, but it's still very, very early on that front.
Thank you. Okay. Next project that we'd like to do a quick report-out on is our JDE Financials Replacement Project. We will continue to envision that project and identify all stakeholders involved. We really have just completed evaluation and assessment of options to secure JDE, and really upcoming, again, we'll look to continue with the plan forward to understand and identify the scope, schedule, and budget for this financial system replacement. And as a quick reminder, as it relates to our citywide ERP, we did move to Workday for the HR functions, as well as the payroll function out of JDE and into Workday as of 2021. 2020. Okay? And this is a quick highlight of some of the new functionality and enhancements that finance team, as well as our dev team, will look to deploy in 2025 and 2026 for the tax system, as well as our business license system. system, as well as our business license system. Okay? We'll move on to police and a couple of the critical projects that we'll highlight, really involve around the replacement of Tiburon, which is Police's records management system, and the move over to Axon, as well as the jail control system replacement project that we do have budgeted for, for this biennium. So our Tiburon Replacement Project, team is making really good headway there. They just completed mapping of Tiburon to Axon RMS and the data conversion. There is testing continuing as it relates to the integrations and interfaces for Axon to Valleycom, the computer dispatch system and entity, as well as sector with Washington State Patrol, and that is the ticket trafficking system. In progress right now, we're continuing with end-user and configuration testing, and a lot of work is going on with GIS at the moment for address and normalization use in Axon. And upcoming, look to get the engineers to load data for Nibersert into the training environment. And we do have planned training for Train the Trainer, scheduled in May, with an overall target date, really upcoming, second quarter of this year, targeting early June. Next police project that we'll look to report out on is the jail control system replacement project. And as we just completed, probably just about a year, maybe about six months ago, the internal camera deployment, we moved to Genetek away from ONSSI. That is a vendor that has at least favorite to move the semen system from the jail control over to potentially Genetek, but we still have to do a lot of vendor evaluation there. But because this was a project that was funded for 2026, at least for 2025, we'll look to get through a lot of the envisioning and the planning process with the Corrections Commander to identify the best vendor for this solution. Next quick report out is on Public Works. Projects that we'll look to highlight is our PRISM system replacement, as well as the Faster Fleet Management Replacement. So for PRISM, it really is just to replace the existing end-of-life PRISM access database used to manage stormwater program workflows, including the NPDES, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, and fats, oils, and grease, and erosion control workflow. Right now, the team is preparing for procurement as this process begins to ramp up. What's been completed, Public Works has selected a leading candidate vendor and discussed custom development options and workflow. And the security operations team and the network operations team have already conducted their technical documentation review. And upcoming, we'll look to provide, or get a quote, a better understand, better understand a quote from the vendor, as it potentially includes some of the custom dev work that we need to encompass all of the requirements and/or functionality from the previous PRISM system. But all in all, this project is on track as well. And for Faster Fleet Management, just about the same thing. This project will look to replace the fleet management system with a more modern, feature-rich information system. Current system is actually, it won't be supported by the vendor beginning August of this year. And it really is in the same place as the PRISM System Replacement Project, where the team is going to continue to map out current state workflows, reaching out to vendors to understand the best vendor for this replacement solution, and really just understand the scope of work with that vendor, as well as a potential price. All right, then we move on to our Amanda stabilization effort with ECD. Recently completed tasks under milestones, the team went live with three new subtypes for commercial applications into production. In the portal, the option was added for customers to request an extension for 30 days before the permit expiration. And a quick mention that the team has reduced the overall count of applications by over 42%. The initial vendor that the team worked with, Vision 33, identified just about a little over 300 individual application types, and we've reduced that to about 184 currently. So that kind of speaks volumes to the work that the team has done to make the permitting process much more efficient. Some of the work in progress, they're currently working on commercial miscellaneous permit types. We're also looking to upgrade some of the components like Java to Azul. And we're also looking to upgrade the system, which is to be included in maintenance and operations, to a new version. And some of the upcoming milestones is, once the commercial application folder type is completed, we'll just, we will be just about halfway deployed with the application types in Amanda from Kiva. Quick diagram to kind of display some of the completed work by way of the application, the folder types, and some of the, the work remaining. And then these next three slides are just for the council to thumb through, and it does show some of the technology work plan as it relates to human resources, municipal court, and legal. We do not have any active and/or current work to report out on this time, but we may have in the future, especially if there's something emergent. We don't have anything approved by way of capital projects for this biennium. But maybe next time, we'll get to visit some of the technology work plan or initiatives that relate to those three departments. So with that, I think that concludes our report out on capital projects and the technology work plan as it relates to some of the departments that we service. Any questions?
I have a question about Amanda stabilization, Brian. So the testing is basically a whole year? Or is it just trying to configure it, or?
Yeah, I can speak a little to the process, and I might defer maybe to Matt to kind of maybe help paint up my answer a little bit. They are working in a little bit more agile methodology.
Okay.
I tried to display that it's a little bit cyclical in the sense that they're working in sprints, and they look to deploy through some of the requirements gathered on their new process, some of the additional functionality in a sprint. And they usually tackle those sprints about one to two months, test those new pieces of functionality in their test environments every one to two months, and will deploy thereafter. And that will continue until we get through all the remaining application types.
Really not much to add, other than just working with the IT group. He's right, everything Brian just said, and of course, Matt left when you guys asked the detailed questions about his stuff. Fifty percent through is probably the thing that jumped out, because it jumped out at me. That's real, we do 5,000-plus permits a year. We prioritize the numbers, so the most, the frequency of permits, we hit, you know, I think, single families, utility permits, things that we just do so many of a year. We wanted that done first and implemented into Amanda. Slower grind as we kind of push through the more laborious work, where we do land use, more complicated stuff. Land use, commercial, yes, is still in front of us. That one, knock wood, should be fairly straightforward because it's very similar to how residential goes through the system. But that is how we prioritize the work, is the numbers. So just the, the frequency of the permits, the more complicated ones are still ahead of us. But honestly, I think we're getting better at the job now, and team's kind of tuned up. So we do hope to find efficiencies as we go through land use. The civil project, you guys saw that on there, that's our site development work. That's still going to be worked on. Then, of course, the big one is land use, the big, all-encompassing kind of nebulous stuff. And so that one's a little trickier, but at the same time, is we have so many of the folders built, while not the same type of permits, but the processes within those folders are very similar. So we're getting better at it, we're kind of on stride now, so I don't want to undercut the timeline there, but we aim to deliver much faster. So that's where we are in that one.
Thank you. I was just, I think I didn't read that part, that it's already live, and you're just, okay, got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember French, followed by Councilmember Boyce, please.
Thank you. My questions would probably be, excuse me, for the director also. So I remember we used to have long, long wait lines for people and permits. We've got new applications in there. So one is, can you tell us how much faster, like percentage-wise, give us some specifics into the type of permit, and how much faster that has gotten? Second one, you guys are now doing the 24/7 input for, for permits, how is that working out? Any problems with that?
Yes. That's probably not the answer. So much better on the single-family stuff. We did have queues. I guess I'll ask, I'm going to go to your last question first. We are open 24/7, so the window's open, so you can sit at their couch and upload a permit at midnight. It will land Workday, you know, in the next Workday at 8:00 AM when our team comes in. We're not working 24 hours, but it does offer flexibility to applicants to do it whenever they have time. And so that is true, 100% true. We used to have a pretty big queue on the application cycle when we were really riding the fence between Amanda and Kiva. I mentioned we're, we hit the high permit frequency numbers first for that very reason, is we frankly were slower when we first started this, this process of transitioning between the two systems because of the numbers. We do a ton of residential permits, hundreds. And so with that transition, we were kind of slow, and we got creative and inventive with the team here to kind of bootstrap together a system, which did require kind of a queue before we could actually do the intake. That is behind us. Councilmember, you had a really specific question that I don't have a specific answer for, other than we are markedly better on efficiencies for turnaround time, from in, intake to issuance on priority permits for utilities, single-family res, our residential permits, night and day different. And so are we going to continue to make improvements? Yes, but I apologize, Matt walked out of the room right when he asked the question for that reason. That's not true. I just don't have the answers. He likely could have given you a number, and I will bring you on Friday.
Thank you very much. Good job, though, because I know, you know, just from what I've heard in the, in the community, that it is markedly different. Thank you to both departments.
Thank you. Quite a few projects, you guys done a phenomenal job, I think Councilmember Lomar talked about that earlier. You got some top-notch people on your left and your right. I'm just curious, as we go forward, what's something that kind of keep you up at night that really concerned you?
It's pretty much the stuff that keeps him up at night from, from a security perspective. That and the onset, it seems to be ubiquitous. Every vendor that comes in to talk with us now either has an AI component to their base product suite, or they've got plans to add one or more AI-based feature enhancements to their offerings. And one of the most talented IT professionals I've ever worked with happens to be sitting to my right. When it comes to AI, it's a technology that, that quite honestly, James has done a spectacular job of getting acclimated with. And so he and I talk a lot from a strategic perspective on how we might be able to look to leverage what AI is, what AI seems to be evolving into, very much at a breakneck speed and rate to, to the, to the city's advantage. And we look at that from a, a department to, by department perspective. So security was at the root of the reorg that we underwent, and it continues to be at the core of what we need to be addressing as we go forward. So that's what I would answer.
So I want to add a little bit to that. Mike is right, the security aspect is obviously the thing that keeps me up at night. But the thing I want to add to that is, security is not a destination, right? We have to understand, we're not going to get to a point, a point, and we're going to say, yep, we're all done, we're there. This is literally a commitment for imper perpetuity, right? As long as we have this network. And, you know, the thing that kind of keeps me up at night is, yes, we're solving today's challenges and problems, but we have to make sure that, you know, down the road, that we have that continual support and that awareness, and that we don't almost get like security fatigue, right? Where we say, oh, we spent too much money, or we don't have, you know, we have too many resources. That's probably for me, big picture, what I worry about the most is that we don't get like a security fatigue.
Yeah. Once again, kudos to your team. I think a couple of us have a little, know a little about IT, can spell it, right? And really understand, you know, what it really take to really kind of have a solid system, and also have a good staff that, with the continuity that they've been having to be able to keep me going. So kudos to you and your team. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Michel, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I can tell you put a lot of work into it, and I appreciate it, and you did a good job keeping it relatable. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I want to say thank you, thank you, Mike. I remember that big poster thing you had on your wall in your office. I don't know if you still keep up with that, but I think we've come a long way, a lot of progress, and I think we've made great strides in the last few years in IT. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, Mike, I got a question for you. So what are you going to do for the retreat? I mean, he didn't gave us all the information here, so.
Yeah. That, so that's a good thing from, from my perspective, and I know that Pat's got some high-priority topics that are on the agenda. So I'm going to acquiesce to him, but if there's something in particular that the council would like to see on that, then, you know, I know that Pat, based on past conversations, Pat would be more than happy to entertain the, the potential for adding those. But I know he's got some good stuff for you already.
Yeah, saying that, to say this was a great presentation. Thanks, thanks a lot to your team and everybody.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Thank you, Mike, thank you, James, and thank you, Brian. It's good to see you and great hearing from you. And if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.
Thank you.